Four, five, six. Two more. We have a quorum and we may begin. Nanga and Ratu. Forty. I call session at nine. I'd like to mention who are here with us this morning. The vice speaker, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Frank Blas Jr., thank you, Senator Taitegui, Senator Tomata, Senator Palashis, Senator Guthertz. Two, four, six, seven, eight. We have a quorum. So, we're continuing on with our agenda in the second reading file. I will continue on with twenty-six and twenty-seven and then we will start all over again. Hopefully, the authors of these bills will be present at the time. If not, we will continue to move on again. So, I'd like to recognize the author of bill number three thirty and that is Senator Palashis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill three thirty dash thirty be placed on the third reading file for purpose of discussion and eventually for voting. May I give a brief remark?
You may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was visited by the Chief of Police of the airport and his staff and I was asked, rather, it was expressed to me that they are interested in establishing the own reserve program to augment the force that they have right now. As you know, I think there's been a freeze in the hiring of new officers even though there are vacancies. And, of course, Chief Camacho also became interested when he was the, for a short time, served as Deputy Chief of Police, or, yeah, Deputy Chief of Police at the Police Department. So, what I did, Madam Speaker, I just actually copied the current program, the Guam Police Reserve Program and it is actually a program at this stage have been refined, fine-tuned, more or less, and then, of course, so that is actually what I'm presenting here. And, the first draft, I gave it to the Chief of Police to review it and, of course, share with the executive manager of the airport and their support of this. This bill, actually, Madam Speaker, just proposes to create airport police reserve program. Whether they implement that or not, they have to decide that, of course. What are the budgetary implications of this? Again, they can still formulate that. What Bill three three zero proposes to do is just to authorize, which is, of course, establishing the program and then authorize that. The arrangement with this is that they still, the Chief of Police of the airport will still report to the executive director. However, of course, the board, the airport board, would be the, more or less, the authority in approving policies, procedures and so forth, recognizing, of course, the autonomy of the airport. So, this is what it is and I'm just changing where it says Guam Police, where it just put Guam Airport Authority Airport Police and so forth. It's a simple bill. Again, there is no budgetary implication as of right now and so, they will now have to sit down if this passes into law and then formulate that. However, they already have, of course, the model from the Guam Police Department, including internal rules and regulations for the implementation of the reserve program itself. And so, this is what this is all about. This is the time where they need this to augment the force. They're gonna use, of course, members of the voluntary reserve programs of the airport and maybe just routine functions, maybe security around the perimeter and helping out when they're short and those things. So, I ask my colleagues to support this, just authorizing, of course, the airport to create, rather, to get into this and implement the program. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And, Madam Speaker, of course, I'd like to move that Tina Rose Munya Barnes because having oversight of the airport, that CBD co-sponsor, or rather, yes, co-sponsor.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Are there any, anyone who would like to speak on Bill three thirty? So, on the motion then to send Bill three thirty to the third reading file, I hear no objections, so ordered. Bill number three three two dash thirty, I'd like to recognize the author, the vice speaker, substitute bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank the chairman of the committee for having heard the bill so expeditiously. Madam Speaker, I introduced this legislation, I won't say it's under duress, but under direction. Over the last two years, the government of Guam has been attending various hearings at the district court as it relates to the sanitary landfill being put out in Dundan. And, last year, there was an effort to try to get some funding for the landfill. Last May, the governor's office announced that it had successfully received notification of a loan and grant combination from USDA of about a hundred and forty million, I mean, a hundred and four million. I think eighty of it was loan and about twenty some of it was grant. Since last May, this loan has been languishing. Many of us, after the big bond was finally issued last June or July, had a race to the legislative hopper to try to figure out ways that we could, if we could use the hundred and four million dollars to pay for the landfill, then there would be a hundred and four million dollars in the bond that we could use for other things. I believe you've introduced legislation for it to go to educational facilities, others have introduced legislation for it to be used in the hospital and other places. I've introduced legislation to try to utilize the USDA loan money for, I mean, the bond money if freed up for purposes of a convention center, cultural center and something that was related to the tourism industry. Unfortunately, all of our bills are languishing in the hopper because those bills cannot move forward until such time as the district court judge, the chief judge, approves the use of the USDA loan money in place of the bond money so that we can have that hundred and four million dollars for other purposes. At the last review hearing, I attended on your behalf, Madam Speaker, and the question was raised because a number of senators had written to the judge asking if the judge would approve the use of the USDA money for the landfill and the freed-up money to be used for various other purposes. The receiver said, "Well, that's an interesting and academic discussion because the loan still has not been finalized." It's still there and there are various things that needed to be done and the governor acknowledged and after the GBB representative, the receiver announced that there were several things that still needed to be done in order for the USDA loan to go through. Number one was that the governor would have to get a waiver for all the construction that had been done to date that had utilized non-US workers and would have to get a waiver for all the work that had been done to date that utilized material from non-US manufacturers. Unfortunately, a lot of the work that had been done up at Lezon had been constructed with material that may have been brought in from Taiwan and China and other areas in Asia. And, part of the USDA requirement is that all the construction material had to be US-made. Another requirement was that all of the work had to be done by US workers. To date, that had not been done. Much of the work that had already been completed or was undergoing at the time was being done by some foreign workers and a lot of the material had been, that had been utilized, had come from Asia. So, the governor assured the chief judge that he would appeal to USDA to ask if they could be a waiver of those provisions for work that had already been done since there was no way of turning back the clock, but with assurances that anything done in the future would be done with US material and US workers. He has submitted, I don't know, I can't speak for him, but I, he did assure the judge that he was going to do that. The receiver also announced that there was one other problem with the USDA loan and that was that the USDA loan, one of the conditions of the loan covenant was, and I'll be having, it should be, I think everybody should already have a copy on their desk of the loan resolution. If you look at the very last line, Madam Speaker, and I asked my fellow colleagues to read the last line of the loan resolution, "No free service or use of the facility will be permitted." The receiver then advised the court that there is currently in statute quite a bit of legislation exempting certain individuals from paying the tipping fee at the landfill in Ordot right now, amongst them being the mayors of all of the villages having free use of the facility in the event that they need to do that. There's also a good citizen exemption, temporary exemption following force majeure and exemption for tipping fees. Yeah, those are the four. Tipping fee for municipal waste collection, tipping fee for, following force majeure, the good citizen exemption and tipping fees for the mayors. The GBB advisor, I mean, receiver, informed the court that unless that this legislation was introduced and passed, that the USDA loan would not come to fruition. The court, the judge then looked at me and I rose and said that I would make the effort of introducing legislation to address this and I unfortunately was very busy with DEIS for several months and neglected to do so, but as soon as I finished my last of my hundred and forty-seven comments, I finally got around to introducing the legislation and the good chairman of the committee immediately had a hearing within five days of the introduction. There was a hearing conducted. Unfortunately, though they were invited, no one came from the mayor's offices nor from the mayor's council. In fact, we delayed the hearing for about fifteen to twenty minutes awaiting their arrival and we heard another bill in front of that, trying to see whether or not any of them would come. No one came. At any rate, Madam Speaker, this bill is now before us. It is an attempt to address this USDA loan that has been languishing and I don't want it said by the governor that we lost the USDA loan because the legislature failed to act on one provision that needed to be addressed. And, that one provision that the legislature needs to address is the repeal of these free services at the landfill. I do this with a heavy heart, but I think I've figured out a way that we can pass this legislation. USDA will know that we're going to repeal all of these exemptions, but it won't take effect until the final approval of the loan. And, I believe all of you have received a copy of a proposed amendment that I'd like to put in the effective date, which reads, "This act shall be effective and rather than immediately upon enactment unto law," we strike that and in its place put, "Upon final approval by the US Department of Agriculture of the loan described in section A of this act." If they're not going to give us the loan, then there's no need for us to repeal these exemptions. These exemptions are, I believe, are necessary. The mayors alone, the cost, I tried to do a cost-benefit analysis of how much it would cost if we were to try to replace the, or we were to appropriate to the mayor's council to have trash service and it ran into a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year. But, doing a cost-benefit analysis, I also realized that even if it did cost us two or three hundred thousand dollars a year to give the mayor's council money to pay for the tipping fees, it would also, that if we could get that hundred and four million dollars and we were able to utilize it for the purposes that some of us have suggested, that the use of that hundred and four million dollars would surely outweigh the annual cost of three hundred thousand dollars. The DI math is pretty clear on that, that you get considerable benefit with use of a hundred and four million dollars by paying three hundred thousand dollars a year to the mayor's council and then we'd have to address what we do after force majeure or even after the liberation when we have the good, we have all those cleanup drives or the Earth Day cleanups that have free use of the landfill when they pick up all of that trash and we can address that. But, I just did not want the governor to point to us and say, "I would have, Guam would have received a hundred and four million dollars in a USDA loan grant combination," but for the fact that the legislature sat on its hands and did not amend the law to assure that we could get this loan. So, I ask for my colleagues' support, both of Bill three thirty-two and also especially this amendment that changes the effective date to make sure that we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater in the event that there is no need to throw the bathwater out at all. So, I'm asking for your support in this legislation and also in the amendment that I've proffered to amend the effective date. I thank you.
On the amendment, which is section three, which is on the effective date, so are there any objections? Anyone like to discuss it? They're being non-ordered. To speak on the main motion, Senator Palashis, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill based on the findings of the author and the formulation of this bill. It makes sense, Madam Speaker. The greater good would be achieved with this bill. I know that this legislature has been very sensitive to the need of the mayors and we come to their aid every time that we can and, in fact, the amendment to remove them is one of the indication earlier on that we did remember them in trying to exempt them. But, if that would be the basis for the federal government to not approve the one hundred and four million dollars that right now is at our doorstep, so to speak, this amendment is a very simple amendment and for this reason, I rise in support of the amendment and I rise in support of the bill itself. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palashis. Senator Respechio on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, once again, this legislature and the people of Guam are put in between a rock and a hard place and it's been the same story that's been told to us over and over and over with this whole landfill selection being selected at the Malolo Village. You know, we know the history with the landfill and we know that the site was selected, or at least I know that the site was selected before the scientific analysis were done. We just can't understand why a landfill would be placed in an area where you have 7.7 million gallons of water that's, that could potentially be used as a freshwater resource for our island's people. And, I want to applaud the efforts of the vice speaker here because he's been among the few of us in this body that have really challenged this whole consent decree process and the judge, the federal judge, to think that she has the authority to just supreme supremacy over the Guam legislature and over our single most important responsibility and authority to appropriate money. Not a single penny was appropriated to support the site selection process for the Malolo landfill. We know that. But, how was this thing done anyway? It was done under the guise of the whole consent decree process and so, be it as it may, as hard as we tried, as much as we tried and prayed that common sense would prevail, apparently, it hasn't. And, in this case, I say we're between a rock and a hard place again because if the vice speaker's bill does not pass, we will not be available to avail ourselves to this USDA loan. There are reasons why, in the original law, Madam Speaker, you have temporary exemption from tipping fees from municipal waste collection. There are reasons why exemptions have been established for good citizens, any individual, registered nonprofit organization or other person who intends to volunteer their resources for the purpose of cleaning up and collecting trash and litter from public places or facilities may be granted a temporary exemption. There are reasons why there are temporary exemption of tipping fees following a force majeure. There are reasons why mayors and vice mayors are exempted from tipping fees and these reasons are simply set up, Madam Speaker, to prevent illegal dump sites. I know the sponsor of the bill talked about this and I couldn't stress enough how these exemptions were put in place to prevent these kinds of illegal dump sites that we're gonna see once the monthly tipping fee reaches thirty dollars a month. You know, despite the landfill being placed in the south where the cost of gas and the cost to truck all these trash down there, it just doesn't make any sense. The environmental, the economic impact of this decision and also the impact of the surrounding communities just doesn't make any sense. And so, I think of the whole thing that we've had to been faced with over the last several years with having to comply with a consent decree, this bill makes a lot of sense. It makes a lot of sense, Madam Speaker, because we need to lift these temporary exemptions because one of the requirements, as was stated earlier, and it's written in black and white in this loan resolution, is that we cannot give anything away. But, what I ask, the sponsor and the oversight chair of Public Works and every single one of us, what I ask of you as well, Madam Speakers, is we find a way to budget in the various mayor's budgets to allow for them to just collect as much trash as they possibly can and to be able to take these trash to the Lejon landfill and then to be able to somehow have the mayors have that budget to pay the receiver so that he doesn't complain to the federal judge that the government of Guam again is asking for a free ride. I don't think we ever asked for a free ride, Madam Speaker. We simply asked for justice from the very beginning of this consent decree process. And so, I rise in full support of this bill. I'm sure that there'll be companion legislation to figure out, one way or the other, how these temporary exemptions that are spelled out in this bill can actually be budgeted for in the future and so we don't exacerbate our current situation and so that we don't lend our hand to creating illegal dump sites. And so, I applaud the efforts of the vice speaker. I know when he started out his presentation, he kind of joked that he's doing this under duress. I want to say that it's actions like this, it's actions that we've taken that have demonstrated, Madam Speaker, that at the end of the day, we're truly reasonable people. It's unfortunate that we weren't dealing with reasonable people in this entire consent decree process. So, I rise in full support of Bill three three two dash thirty.
Thank you very much, Senator Respechio. On the main motion, I recognize Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
See, Ms. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, as I share the sentiments of the previous speaker who spoke elaborately and shared his presentation of what some of our colleagues have done in this legislative process, I too support the efforts of this bill and I want to say I support it with a heavy heart and I've always been one, when it comes to the mayors and vice mayors in the villages around the island, I've always been there to advocate for their needs and the assistance for what they do for the villages within their villages and taking that opportunity away, I was, I felt a lot better when I heard the author of the legislation speak to about the funding that would be required from the mayors if this was taken away from them, that there would be another opportunity to see what we could do to assist them. So, with that being said, I'm just gonna be real brief in saying, I will stand and rise in this support and understand that being caught between that rock and that hard place and knowing that the decisions have to be made because we will be denied the opportunity if these exemptions, if these exemptions were not taken away, that we could possibly be penalized for not having this loan go through, then of course, I have to stand here and support that effort and that's where I'm at today with this. But, I just want everybody to know that the mayors and the vice mayors of the villages around the island continue to work very, very hard and a lot of times with the constraints that they're going through with their financial budgeting and just being able to find resources out there to keep, to try and keep their villages clean and safe and just work with the, all the issues and concerns that happen then, it's really hard for them to look for resources and as they continue to get creative in their efforts to safeguard their village, this is one monkey wrench that's gonna be thrown in into the mayors and vice mayors trying to find alternatives to get funding to at least clean up their villages and, like I said, I will stand and rise and support this bill. I did sign the committee report, the voting sheet, the saying I will support the efforts and only to tell you that it's with a heavy heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator Taitegui, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too stand in support of this bill. I do have some reservations, like all of us. We're concerned about the effect that it's gonna cause these agencies when it comes to paying for the tipping fees, when they're gonna be obligated to do so. I would like to know if the author would yield to a question, just so that I can prepare myself in the event that if this does go through, which I'm very in support of the amendment because my reservations were that this is kind of ahead of the game, but with this amendment that was made to the bill definitely puts me at ease with that respect. But, has there been a study on the costs as, to date, how much this would cost the government of Guam to appropriate for these areas?
Do you, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Yes, we did a, just a preliminary. Yes, we did a, just a preliminary figuring that the mayors go to the dump, let's say five days a week. Right now, it's eight dollars to go to the dump. I mean, even if, you know, on the average, I'm sure some of them go more than that. But that's forty dollars per mayor times twenty, that's like eight hundred dollars almost a day. I mean, just to go to, I mean, for eight hundred dollars a week times fifty-two weeks comes out to about four hundred.
Sixteen, eighteen, fourteen, forty-five, forty-five, sixty.
Four hundred thousand.
Thirty-six thousand.
Yeah. But, but just trying to replace it, my staff even contacted the big trash companies about how much it would cost to put huge, those big containers, and we figured, I don't have my calculations with me, but the staff was saying that it would go anywhere from a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars a year in additional cost that we would have to find. But when they told me that, I also figured that the use of, I mean, to be able to have a hundred and four million dollars as compared to paying three hundred thousand, it was an easy decision, but it was still, I mean, from what Senator Rispio said, it was hard. I wanted to make sure that we didn't, we didn't go backwards and start creating illegal dump sites because the mayors weren't picking things up. And so, we would have to find some money, but if we had the hundred and four million, we would have other revenue that we could use, so. My staff figured anywhere from a conservative hundred thousand to as much as three hundred thousand dollars if we had to put a big gigantic dumpster at every mayor's office to be picked up two or three times a week.
Thank you, thank you. With that respect, the whole purpose, too, was one of my biggest concerns, Madam Speaker, is that we're looking at ways to avoid littering, you know, in these villages, and of course, with the tipping fee going up, you know, it's going to cause some illegal dumping. And that we consider that when we pass this bill, that everyone that does vote for this bill is also going to hold to the fact that not only will it maybe cost three hundred thousand dollars that we must find to appropriate the money for the mayors, but we also have to find a little bit more to help the mayors out as the tipping fee increases. So, it's going to be a little bit more than three hundred thousand dollars if we are going to do this right and pass this bill correctly without any effect, domino effect.
Can you please state your point?
I'm sorry. The office made the calculation at the increase to fifteen, because the new drive-up is going to be fifteen, effective, I think, in next month or something. Yeah. So, we did the calculation at fifteen, Madam, that the calculation was done at fifteen, not at the eight.
Okay. Thank you.
With that being said, that even brings another point that I was trying to make with regards to the additional tipping fee. It's going to have an increase in illegal dumping. So, not only that the good senator and the author of the bill who have calculated this funding, that we all must be aware that it's going to be a little bit more than that, because we're going to have to help the mayors to avoid this illegal dumping as the tipping fee grows. So, it's going to be a little bit more than when it comes to appropriation, and that we all must be really conscious of this as it comes further with regarding the appropriation. The other question I have, and I know you've done your homework, the good senator, the author of the legislation here, this has another question. As you know, I have a, put out legislation with regards to the host community bill that I put out. It's no free tipping fees or anything like that, but it is a host community legislation. Is there any effect on this loan that would affect, you know, affect its ability to process through?
Do you yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I do yield. No, no, there isn't. I mean, that would be completely different. That has nothing to do with this loan. With the hundred and four million, we could give the village of Inrahan Malolo a gym that they may need, so.
I apologize, Madam Speaker. I would like to make apology that I wasn't aware that we weren't supposed to, as you know, I am the rookie senator, the, I learn as we go. But in that event, I just wanted to clarify, and I should have done it off-camera, but other than that, I do support this bill. It's very important, and it's very important that we are prepared to make the appropriations for this as well as we move forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, and since it is your first term, there's always a learning curve, so.
You're good. That's how we learn. On the main motion, are there any other speakers? There being none, Mr. Vice Speaker, do you want to close?
Just very quickly, Madam Speaker, I just want to assure the community, and especially the mayors who have indicated that they understand this, is that this will not, and I underscore not, will not go into effect if there is no final approval of the USDA loan. This is only being introduced and passed in anticipation of the hundred and four million, and if and when that is finally signed, as we keep getting assured, I keep calling Gied and they keep saying it's going to go through. And so, I'm trying to make sure that we don't get blamed for it not happening. It's bad enough that someone lost a hundred, two hundred million. I don't think we need to be on record as losing a hundred million because we didn't act.
Thank you very much. On the motion then to send bill, substitute bill three-two-two-dash-thirty and further amended on the floor to the third reading file without any objections, hearing none, If you look at your agenda, we're starting back up again. My understanding is that some of the members have asked, again, to pass, that would be Bill eighteen, Bill ninety-three, Bill two-oh-eight. The author, Senator Tenorius, not here for fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. We should be on Bill two-forty-four, but the chair does not have a committee report, so. Senator Rispio, can I ask you then at least for two-four-four and two-four-nine, if you can do a follow-up for me? I don't have copies of those. I do now, and I hope everyone has a copy of the committee report on Bill number eighteen-LS, and I recognize then the author, Senator Espaldon.
Morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number eighteen-LS on a third reading file, and I'd like to speak to it.
You may continue then discussing it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill is an act to create a Guam Visitors Bureau rainy day fund. Basically, the need to establish a rainy day fund is more of a safeguard against times when there are natural disasters or man-made disasters. In essence, we're having a rainy day fund, a set-aside fund, wherein if conditions, economic conditions downturn, or perhaps some natural occurrences such as the typhoons or whatnot, basically puts our visitor industry in a position where we need to market and campaign more aggressively because of these disasters, that they would have a funding source, which would be more of a savings source, a rainy day fund. This rainy day fund, in essence, seeks to set aside about one, excuse me, in this, it has an amount equal to one and one-half percent of the adopted revenue projections of the TAF, of the tourist attraction fund, or at a minimum, two hundred thousand dollars every fiscal year. At this point in time, Madam Speaker, on page two of this, under section ninety-three-oh-two, if, I would like to make an amendment, because again, it is only implicit, not explicit, that the one and one-half percent of the adopted revenue will be coming from the TAF. So, with that, I would like to make an amendment that on page two, line number five, after the words "adopted revenue projections," should be the little phrase of the tourist attraction fund, or the TAF.
On the amendment on page two, line five, after the word "projection," insert the words of the tourist attraction fund, TAF, known as TF. Are there any objections, any discussions? There being none, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Also, there is, what the, again, fund will do would allow the Visitors Bureau to basically have control over these funds, and to basically make the determination during or after a natural disaster, or after economic conditions so called for, to be able to access this fund, in which they would have authority to spend up to about fifty, to spend up to fifty percent of the fund's balance for their needs to advertise. Right now, the Guam Visitors Bureau has a certificate of deposit in the amount of about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. And again, here's where I need to make another correction, an amendment to this bill, Madam Speaker, on page two, line number twenty-five, after the word bureaus, it should be, instead of Citibank certificate of deposit, it will be a Bank of Guam certificate of deposit. The deposit has been moved from one bank to another.
Okay, so.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker.
You want to continue speaking first on it?
Well, again, that would be the amendment, to change it to Citibank to Bank of Guam.
Okay, so on the amendment then on page two, line twenty-five, after the word bureaus, to strike out Citibank and put in its place Bank of Guam. Are there any objections to that, hearing none, so ordered?
In essence, Madam Speaker, there is five hundred fifty thousand dollars in a certificate of deposit at the Bank of Guam, which will basically be the initial deposit for fiscal year two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. And so, there would be, there would be no need to appropriate or to allocate anything out of the tourist attraction fund for this fiscal year, for last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And with that, again, this is a very simple concept, again, just to reiterate, is to create a rainy day fund for the Guam Visitors Bureau in the event that Guam is hit by a natural disaster, or there are some economic challenges that we need to overcome due to international economic conditions. So, with that, I ask for the support of my colleagues. Those who have not seen the committee report yet, if you will note that the Guam Visitors Bureau has spoken out in favor of this bill to have, again, a savings fund of some sort, a rainy day fund, so as Mr. Verdon Pinko and anybody else, everybody else who testified were in support of this bill. So, with that, I ask for the support of my colleagues on this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Espaldon. On Bill number eighteen, are there any speakers? There's no one then who would want to speak. On Bill number eighteen, as amended on the floor, so then, no objections then to send Bill eighteen to the third reading file, so ordered.
PJ will be reprimanded later.
Okay, we're continuing on. The chair doesn't have copies of Bill two-forty-four, two-forty-nine, and two-sixty-nine, moving on to seventy-two. Centragan's not present. That would take us up to Resolution two-eighty, which I don't have. Tenorius not present for two-ninety-five. Two-ninety-eight. No bill, Resolution number two-nine-nine. I would like to recognize the author, Senator Ada.
Madam Speaker, this Resolution two-nine-nine is actually a resolution which seeks to reaffirm the mandates of public law thirteen-dash-eighty-seven, which was the public law that established the Jose de Leon Guerrero Commercial Port of Guam. And basically, in that public law, it charged the commercial port as the gateway for ocean commerce into Guam and out of Guam to other destinations. Now, unfortunately, well, the question was asked, well, why do we need to reaffirm that the port authority is the gateway for ocean commerce here on Guam? It seems to be very much a given. Well, we all know that very recently, and of course, I won't go into too much details because the issue is in court under litigation.
So, Senator, before you-
And so, I'm sorry, yes, before I go further, I move that Resolution two-nine-nine, as substituted by the author, the move to the third file, third reading file.
Yes, and you want to continue to talk about it?
And I want to continue to talk on it.
Yes, and you may continue then. Thank you very much for that motion.
And so, Resolution two-nine-nine is actually then a resolution that reaffirms that the commercial port of Guam is the gateway for ocean commerce. And it is important that we do that, because although a lot of people will think, well, why do we need to reaffirm it? It is the gateway. Well, one would think that, but we do know that just several months ago, there was an incident where another entity thought otherwise and decided to actually ship things out of Guam using another port facility. And without going into too much details, because the matter is under litigation, I think it's important that the legislature adopts this resolution, reaffirming that that, in fact, is the case, that we still hold the commercial port of Guam as the gateway for ocean commerce. It's also important that we reaffirm this at this point, because we are getting ready, the port is getting ready to invest millions of dollars in the upgrade and modernization of its facility. And it's important that every commercial, ocean-going commercial activity be handled by the port. Otherwise, those potential revenues will be lost and jeopardizing the ability of the port to be able to satisfy its debt services for the monies, for the capital that it will be borrowing in order to be able to carry out the modernization of the port. So, one of the things that, of course, the resolution asks is that the, is that the port and the U.S. Department of Defense must, by mutual agreement, work to assure that procurement contracts and cargo shipping documents be created to enforce and track compliance with these requirements. We go through three pages, or actually, two pages of this resolution, and the bottom line is simply reaffirming that the commercial port of Guam, the Jose de Leon Guerrero, is the gateway for ocean commerce. And that's, it's important that we do that now, so that if anybody else is thinking that they're going to be able to ship things in and out of Guam, be it related to the military buildup, be it related to other growth requirements here on Guam, that that idea be set aside quickly, because as a policymaking body, we are saying that the, those activities must go through the Jose de Leon Guerrero Commercial Port of Guam. And so, I ask my colleagues to support the resolution, so that we basically give that official position as to the role that the commercial port of Guam plays in ocean commerce in this region. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak? Resolution number two-nine-nine? There being none, then, so on the motion to place Resolution two-nine-nine in the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. file without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Senator Palacios, you're recognized on 318.
Mr. Speaker, may I yield to the chairperson of the committee? I understand we have something coming from the mayor's council.
Thanks very much.
Si, doo, sma, si, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I just received a message via text that the Mariso mayor had sent out the, asking for the support for the proposed legislation on Bill 318, and out of the ten municipal planning member, council members, there were eight who signed on to it because they couldn't find the other two, but it is, the documentation is en route from Mariso to here, and we should have it real shortly, so if we'd like to proceed on that measure or wait for it to come, it's up to the table, I mean, the body.
I'd have no reason to, unless someone. Can we just move it down then to the voting file?
I have no objections of moving it down to the voting file.
If there's no objection, so ordered, 318 is moved to the voting file. Can somebody find me, we'll take a short minute recess.
We're going to take a brief recess and to allow Senator Espaldon to get his bill. Showtime needed for Bill 215, I mean, 315, so we're going to take an early lunch recess, but I need for you to be at a meeting this afternoon at 1:15 with Matrix. So we're coming back, yes, we are, and we will then resume session at 2 o'clock, but 1:15 at my office for the meeting. Thank you.